Sorry, I'm having a problem with my camera. Let's see, it'll do, there we go, okay.
Here she is.
Hi, everybody. I make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
Second. Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Lightkin.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer. Motion passes.
Okay, welcome back to the budget, everybody. And Dorothea, thank you for sending out the packet. We need to pick up, I guess, where we left off, which is where?
Well, we kinda, it's, you know, a few days and I totally lost my place. We were scheduled really to talk on sewer today. But we can go back to general if anybody needs to. There was some minor changes we made with general. But all in all, still balanced. I did send out the wage information that was requested from the last meeting. So I hope they answered everybody's questions to how I got to where I got. I'll open it to the board.
So that was very helpful. Thank you on the, on the wage spreadsheet. Because of that, I would like to have an executive session at some point. It doesn't need to be right now. If there are other things that other people want to talk about. But I did want to address some employee performance and salary. And how those two things are tied together for some specifics of the staff itself. So if you guys want to do that now, great. If you want to do it another time, that works too.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I'm thinking, we do have the information about the tool cat. And Zach, thank you for that. And I know you're looking for some action from the board in terms of moving forward with a lot of intent for this piece of equipment. You brought it before the board, I believe, last week.
Yes, I have an updated quote, which includes, I had the sales rep take off one item, which was an upgraded snow blower to what we typically run. And add on a new silver, identical to what we run, just new. So that adjusted the price a little bit. The old, the one that he took off was, I think, around $12,000. And then with the addition of the new lower amp blade comes to $10,584. So the grand total price with the trade in of our current tool kit is $51,819 with two new attachments and created. So I was hoping to maybe get approval tonight so I can put in a letter of intent with the sales rep and hopes that we can see the machine before too late into next year, next budget year.
And we were talking about this earlier. We are using some CHIPS funds for this, am I correct?
Yes, I believe CHIPS funds would be covering the costs of the purchase. So it wouldn't affect the budget outside of that. Shouldn't. I believe that's right, right, Dorothea?
Yeah, that was the attempt. The numbers are a little different in the budget because we're showing more on the purchasing because of the trade in. Zach wasn't sure at this time if he was going to trade in the other tool cat or sell it outright. So in the cost, initial cost was given to me around 80, 85,000, 80, I think, 875, 80, so.
Seventy-three, eight, nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to say that the trade in value that they're offering is right about middle ground of what they are selling at auction right now for. They seem to be going in the year that we have with the amount of hours, which is kind of more than what is typically seen out there. They're offered between 20 and 25,000 dollars or they're, they're selling at auction for about that.
So you're just doing sort of the average of it?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
But this, this $22,000 is confirmed by Bobcat for, that they would offer us as a trade in.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's on pretty firm ground. Yes, Dan and then Lilly.
So, um, there were two things. One is, can you remind me how the CHIPS funding works? We already have that cash and it's sitting aside, or we have to apply for it and we get reimbursed?
No, those are funds that we get on a yearly basis and they roll over. So if we don't spend them, then they just start to accumulate.
Okay, so we have X number of dollars in the account. Dorothy is shaking her head now.
No, Dan, you have it right. We do have to apply for it and usually we get it within the same budget period. It's a shorter timeframe. It's not like, you know, a year and a half, we have to wait for the funding back. It's within that portion.
Okay, so we, we front the cash and then we are reimbursed X percent of it?
We're reimbursed the whole amount.
The whole amount?
Yeah. Yes.
The whole, the whole amount of the, of the money we spent or the whole amount of the stipend?
The whole money, only what we spent.
Okay, so the whole thing will be covered by CHIPS funding?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And then the second one is more of a tactical question and it's, is this narrower so we're not tearing up people's lawns?
Same with.
Same with. Help me understand that, because, you know, you walk through the village and you see a lot of that. Why, why do we have a wider one than our sidewalks?
For the capabilities of it. We've tried narrower machines in the past and they're just not as good at getting around these communities. The tool cat, we tried to use for only the wider areas and also just for shoveling out curb ramp areas and the tow path. But every once in a while, we have to bring it on to the narrower sidewalks to get stuff done. The, it's, it's a little bit wider than the T450 Bobcat that we have, but not by much. And unfortunately, you know, soft brown and fresh white snow, anytime you, you know, come near it, it's going to look a lot worse than what it is. And it's not uncommon.
You go back and repair it in the spring when we're done with plowing. While you really make an effort to do that and we're going to do a Facebook posting again. So people can call in and let, let us know if we've missed, you know, their yard or something, if there's been, been a tread mark. Also, the other aspect of why it's wider than the sidewalks is that the, so many of our existing sidewalks are narrower. So they're not conforming to current code. So on, on conforming sidewalks that meet our current code, we have a better time. Am I correct with the tool cap?
Yes.
So, for example, if we were to, when we redo those sidewalks on South Street, it will be easier even with those sidewalks.
Um, hopefully, sure, those are mostly five foot through there.
Yeah, they are. Actually, now that I'm thinking about that, yeah.
There are only a few sections of four foot sidewalk left and I think most of it is on State Street and East Jefferson. Most of the village roads have five foot sidewalks, you know, but.
Yeah. The thing is, going to be redone too.
Yeah. The other thing too is, is there's a lot of overgrowth on the sidewalk. So, you know, we're staying pretty close to the sidewalk. But you know, any grass or sod that's going over it is going to get tore up.
That's not the only thing that, that piece of equipment is used for.
Correct. No, no, that, the tool cat gets used year round. It has more hours than a pickup truck. So that's kind of our go-to piece of equipment for everything.
Yeah, it's fundamental.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, Lilly.
Thank you. Is the, the CHIPS funding, I, I, I seem to remember it's an annual, an annual thing. You can't, you can't apply more than one time in a, in a budget cycle? Is that correct?
Uh, no.
Can you do it more than one time?
You can do it more than one time. It's, it's, it's money that is available to us. And like Dorothea had said, I, I guess I misspoke. We have to put the money upfront and then we get reimbursed, but we just can't exceed what that balance is. And there are certain stipulations that you can only use that money towards certain equipment or certain projects.
So there's no, I assume there's no, you're saying there's no ceiling on the, if we needed three pieces of equipment, we could apply for CHIPS money for all three of them?
It's, it's not like a grant where, you know, the, there is a ceiling. There's only a certain amount that we're allowed of each year.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a grant. It's, it's an allotment based on, I believe, population and, you know, what's the other word?
Road mileage.
Yeah, for, for each village, for each municipality. So it varies from municipality to municipality.
Right. So is that, is it this year's allotment that we are discussing or are we talking about 2223 allotment? Did we already apply for something in 20?
Good question.
Twenty-one.
We, no, the money is, is there currently. We've been sitting on it, waiting for, for, to put it towards something. And then in April, we get next year's allotment.
Great.
What you're saying is we're using the previous budget cycle. We have not utilized that. So we're using that. And yet we will be able to do it perhaps again in the next budget cycle, the 2223. Yes, okay, thank you.
Yep.
And there's enough, further to that is a good question, Lilly. Further to that, there's enough in the current year to cover this?
That's my understanding. Dorothea, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm speaking.
Roll it over.
Right, we could roll it over, speaking from with Zach.
That's not, that's not what I'm asking.
No, no, I'm getting there.
What's the current balance is?
I don't have the exact number with talking with Zach. I believe it was around 60,000. We anticipated another 30, 40,000 in April coming into the account.
Okay, so there's sick, call it 60 in there now and we get a 20 trade in.
Yes.
So this is more or less a wash.
Yeah.
The, the other question I had around this was, was there anything else that we had thought to use that CHIPS funding for in the current 2122 budget year? Or was this the only thing? So I'm just thinking of opportunity costs.
Those ones were originally slated for South Street, but I think we've come up with different means of addressing South Street.
Okay.
Yeah, with South Street, just to talk about South Street very quickly, we got the $100,000 grant, which is enabling us to start in on South Street. And we also have money set aside, excuse me, for engineering. Well, that, that's already budgeted. So I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the tool cat and send a letter of intent.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Lightkin.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Bye.
Motion approved.
Trustee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Flintstone Mobile.
Everybody's going to be thrilled.
Yeah.
Unshul leather.
Okay, where would the board like to go? Would we like to discuss sewer or we want to continue with general? Want to talk about sewer? Oh, Lilly, yep.
I just have one question outstanding from last, our last discussion. And that is on, and I wrote, I'm sorry, I wrote the number down. I think it's under legal. And it is ZA, A, And it is for the embankment program. And as it showed that we used 2,000 in the last budget cycle, which is what we approved. And then it's extending into the next budget cycle, 2223, for an additional 2,000. Is that, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Um, actually, I'm going to relabel that line. I wanted to leave it the same because we're still in the current budget year. It, I put a slash Zoglin miscellaneous. In the estimate we received from Mindy, it showed 2,000 miscellaneous Zoglin. So I didn't have a line for her with that description. I could have created it and maybe that would be easier. But I just funded it for the 2,000. It just seems, it's just the same amount, which makes you think it was budgeting the same thing, but it's not. It was actually the Zoglin miscellaneous in her estimate.
Okay, so we will not be tied into that as a line for embankment. If that, that money could be used in another way if she has a, an added expense, I see.
Yeah, no, the lines get used the way you want to use them. It's just that when, you know, the coating and everything fit the need. I just kind of put in a slash to have it cover both for currently.
Okay, yes, Justin.
Yeah, I just had a separate question about the federal aid, other ARPA section, and that was A4980. I, it looks like that's correct. That was kind of a one-time revenue in 2122 modified. And I'm sorry, actually, expend revenues to 123121. So I imagine that's the COVID funding, is it?
Yes, ARPA is the money that we receive as American Rescue. I had spoken to our attorney initially when we brought it in. We counted it as revenue for the year, which was wrong. And he had me move it into deferred revenue. As I said, it has to act almost like a reserve. It's not part of our budget. We will be seeing another funding of ARPA in this year and it'll be done the same way. So you don't budget for it because it's not, it's not a budgetary item. It can't be used with the budget unless you budget to use it. Does that make sense?
I think so. Yeah, so the, the follow-up question that I would have then, so it doesn't just go into, you're saying it doesn't just go into like an unrestricted fund, right? We actually have to make a transfer from the fund that it comes into to some other purpose. And it sounds like that addresses my concern, which is that I want to make sure, and I think trustee Keating has brought this up before as well. I want to make sure that we don't just use it for recurring revenue and, you know, it's actually.
Can't be used that way according to federal law and guidelines for use of the funding. Yeah.
You have to budget to, you have to establish the budget. You're going to use, what you're going to use it for and how, and then pull it into your budget that way. You can't just throw it in revenue.
Great. So it sounds like everything is in place to be able to have that discussion at some other board meeting. Great, thank you.
Yep. And we, I think we have, correct me if I'm wrong, Dorothea, what, up to five years to use it?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have some, we have some leeway there. And typically, it's geared to infrastructure projects. What was it? Upgrading facilities for meetings, technology, you know, the sort of specific categories where we can direct the money.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was some salary allotments too, but I wouldn't agree to use it there because then you're, you're going to have to cover it out of general anyway. So no point putting it into a salary.
Yep. Okay, any questions on that? All right. Did you, did you want to talk about the sewer fund? Any questions on that? Anything you'd like to highlight for us, Dorothea?
Um, I can't, let me bring up the sewer and show the screen. That will help. Okay. So we're going to start right with the appropriations. Sewer is very short. There wasn't much that really needed to change. I did put in the salaries as I shown on those spreadsheets that I sent to the board. And not really a lot to highlight. We added a little bit more on engineering. As we said, per Zach, we're keeping the flush truck money in here for repairs as needed. And let's go on. There's not a lot here to go over. Sanitary, I will go over this. The CIPP sewer lining, right here. Now, originally I was putting in 70 and then I talked to Zach and he said we could put in 30 and then we had a conversation with Scott Harder. The 139,000 we were slated to do this year is not going to happen this year. With the goal of putting out the bid and everything that needs to happen before they could even start the project would be in our new budget year. So we're not going to spend 139, so I just shifted it into this budget year. We had intended to use fund balance money to pay for that anyway. So I treated it just like it was treated last year. Any questions on that? Okay. No major changes here at all?
The, the only question I had on that, sorry, I couldn't get to the mute button quick enough. You, you said you put some extra money from engineering in there, which seems wise. Was that, so did you just allocate money that was already in a line item for engineering or was this additional money?
No, we had a line for engineering in there and I just updated a little bit, just in case it was needed and we can always up it more if the board feels so.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure I was clear on that. So we've got an engineering line item that's not in the sewer fund. Right?
Yes, we do have an engineering line.
It's on page one, yeah.
Right, and then we've got an engineering line item in here. Did we move money from the general fund engineering line to increase it? Or did we just increase it in the sewer?
We actually increased it in both general and sewer fund.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Because I wasn't sure if there would be any sewer projects that might require some additions.
So this is not like the, the staff salaries where we allocated and it's, it's the same size pie. It's, we increased it, okay, got.
We just, I just increased it.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, you see here, this is very, this is usually why Mary saved this for last because it's very simple. There's not much. There's the employee benefits, again, allocation. I will point out state retirement, the allocation to sewer is less because of our sewer bill, our sewer bill. Our state, our New York state retirement is going to be less, so it's reflected there. And I took out the reserve funding as I spoke to, with the board on. I took those out as we discussed. And then I put in our income. I did put in a, as the board has been doing for the last several years, a 10% increase for the rates. And I reflected that in there and just the interest on the reserves. There's no inter-fund transfers to. And that's it. And we end up using as, like the previous year, we're anticipating using 105,000 out of the fund balance. It's actually a little less than last year, but it's still there. It's pretty much, it's pretty much a reflection of last year's budget because of the way we handling that mining for the sewers. Any big questions on there or changes the board can see at this point?
Oh, I think it looks good. Pretty quiet out there, so I guess, oh, I see Justin's hand up.
Yeah, could, could we just talk through the 10% increase that we've been doing recently? And, you know, what's the, is this a basis in, in the cost or just bringing our revenue up to speed with, we need to maintain the, the sewers? And why is that? How many years have we been doing that? What's the justification this year?
Well, um, this has been a past practice for several years. I think this started be, right around the time I came. Lilly can correct me on that one. It's in the justification to increase the money coming in to establish some of the reserves that were needed for the fund as well as running the property. It should be self-sustaining, so it should be able to cover its own bills and that's making sure it's bringing in the proper revenue. But I think the initial increases were done and have been done so we could establish the appropriate reserves for the fund.
I, I haven't spent a lot of time looking through this, but I guess it seems like we're, now this year we are making one other change, which is not directing to the reserves that are established in the sewer fund. So if the historic justification for increasing the rents by 10% was to divert that to reserves and we're no longer diverting that to reserves, is that something that we should revisit?
It's going to be a discussion for the board. I just followed past, past practice and putting it to you.
I'm not suggesting a specific direction, just raising the question here. I don't know the answer.
Could, could you clarify that a little bit for me, please? So that if we, let's say the board determined that they would make it 5% this year rather than 10%, saying that the cost had not increased substantially. This, is that what, is that what the thinking is? That instead of automatically making it 10%, it's not really based on any specific cost increases. It's just past practice so that the reserve was being built up for that eventual, hopefully not, but the eventual catastrophe was, I think, the original thinking. That, that was the concern. So going forward, is, are you asking if the board would wish to consider a smaller, a lower percentage? Is that the question?
Yeah, I think that expresses it well. I don't really know. It just seems that we're changing allocations here and we're not putting money into reserves. You know, we're, we're taking the 300 and transferring that over to the catastrophic recovery fund, whatever we're, we're calling that. We're stopping the contributions to the different reserves that were previously established. So do, do we want to revisit the historic 10% increase if that was done for the purpose of establishing reserves?
Another question. Are we still, I, I noticed there was nothing on the line for equipment, for DPW equipment. Would part of that, I know some of the equipment is covered by the sewer, the sewer reserve. So wouldn't we want to put some into that account? For equipment going forward? Maybe I'm not understanding that correctly.
I think the board, correct me if I'm wrong, last budget meeting when we talked about reserves, we talked about not putting money into the existing reserves until they were reformatted, re-aligned so that the money was set aside. If the board wishes to establish a new equipment reserve in sewer, they're more than welcome to, but we have one, we need to work on the language, get it so it's successful. Usable, using, trying to find the right words here, usable appropriately, that we have the right means to take the money out. So the point was not, at this point, not to put more money in there until Jeff went through the process and we got it all reallocated.
And those are reserves that just haven't been accessed at all, you know. I, I think we're sort of cross-pollinating on some of these reserves. Maybe that's what I'm.
Yeah, and let me point out, there's two reserves on here that don't exist. The equipment reserve and the facilities reserve. The board had funded them last year, but they don't exist. So we would have to go through the process with Jeff to make, to establish them if that's what the board wanted to do. In the current year, just following what the board directed me last meeting, I removed the funding from there. So.
Right.
I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't ever fund these reserves again. I think once they're renamed, redone, repurposed, absolutely keep funding them. You're going to always need equipment of the vehicle repair, equipment breaks all the time, the Pittsburgh Pub. All these are great reserves and they should be established and used and as appropriately. But right now, until we can access them, there's no point putting more in there. We can always access the money if we needed out of the fund until it was corrupted.
And the 300,000 that was, that we had just set up for the catastrophic, you know, emergency reserve or what, repair reserve. That is current language that's been vetted and so that money would be accessible.
Correct. And that's funded fully. So I don't think the board wants to put any more into that line. So it's already established and I, I should establish it on the budget. But honestly, you're not going to put more in because you said you didn't want to fund it any more than 300,000. So it's funded in full.
Yeah, it's capped, well, not capped, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, unless you have an amendment to it.
Okay, so it brings us back to the discussion about a percentage increase. You know, that, the question that Justin raised, are there any other thoughts on that about the increase? I mean, Zach can tell you, things aren't getting cheaper. So. No, no thoughts? Keep it as is? 5%?
I think it's a 10. I think it's a 10%.
No, I'm saying, keep it as is, which would be 10 or 5% or?
I, I think for now it makes sense to keep it at 10. It's not final, but we have to see how the rest of the budget shakes out.
Okay. Okay, so we can move forward then. I think that's fair.
I, I mean, I don't think it, I think it makes a lot of sense for reserves to be aggressively budgeted. So that, that feels good to me. I I mean, I I don't think it, I think it makes a lot of sense for reserves to be aggressively budgeted, so that that feels good to me.
Yeah, I I'll feel a lot better when we get everything sorted out. I think that'll make a huge difference going forward. Yep. Um, oh, you know, well, we can stay on the budget, but I do want to say we, um, I sent out something right before the meeting. It came in today from Assemblywoman Burns's office. They're putting forth the uh twenty five mile an hour legislation again in the assembly, and so we have to, um, the board has to take action to fill out the forms and submit them for home rule. Um, Renee, I think you saw it. Did you?
Yeah, I already responded. I, um, this happens every year when they reintroduce it because the, um, or when they amend it because the bill changes, the like, or the language of the bill has not changed, but the bill number has um, for both the Senate and the House, so we have to resubmit the home rule um, resolution, and Jeff can give us guidance on that, but in previous years, we just renewed it um, by uh, or did the a new resolution just by using the old one and amending the dates and the yeah, the bill numbers, since the language of the bill has not changed. Sorry to be redundant.
Well, it's been before the assembly how many times? My goodness.
Yeah, but the latest version last year, when Senator uh Brooks' um central office helped us change the language of a little bit to come at it from a different angle. Um, that, so I think last year was the first time we used that language.
Okay, all right.
I don't think the resolution changes, though, except.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not so sure that does. Um, they they did express, uh, Marjorie Burns's aide expressed that uh time is of the essence to make sure that they can get this bill moving forward for us, so.
So she's still going to do it even though um, Lunsford is our.
Everything, I am still getting communications from Marjorie Burns's office.
Okay, so I'm, I can introduce it, and she can still sponsor it?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I mean, I.
Expected it to come from from Lunsford, Lunsford.
I haven't heard a peep from from the uh Lunsford's office.
Okay, perfect. Well, let's carry on. If they ask for it, let's give it to them.
Yeah, um, but but again, you know, just getting back, um, it, it time really is of the essence. I know we have our meeting, not this Thursday, but next. Um, I may, I may reach out to uh the aide who sent the information and see if if that's a short enough window for them, for us to be able to act within like the next ten days. She may want it sooner, so be prepared, maybe.
Yeah, see if we could add it to our Monday, our Monday budget meeting at the.
Maybe then, yeah, just, I think they're really looking for a short window, you know.
And can we make sure that's publicly noticed since it's not a budget thing?
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, any further discussion on sewer?
Not on sewer.
Yeah, I think we're good on sewer.
Okay, let me.
Can I ask you a question about the um about the wage comparison spreadsheet? Can I share my screen real quick?
Yep.
All right. Just want to make sure I have you guys seeing everything, seeing my screen here?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Um, I want to make sure I I understand this column, expected to pay date, three, four, twenty.
Expended to pay.
Expended, okay, sorry.
That's.
Okay, so that's, that's year to date.
Right, that's through March
Okay.
Fourth.
Okay.
Those were the current numbers.
All right, then my other question is, I I just kind of checked the math on this, six point five percent, and saw he's up at seven point three. Why is that?
Because that's what I'm recommending the board do.
Okay, and then um, this is, James is the uh, he's the parking.
Monitor.
Yeah, monitor. Why is that higher? Just to, just because he was here and we're getting him up to there?
Yep, I'm, I'm recommending that as well.
Okay. Um, then I I would like to go into executive session to talk about employee performance and compensation. So I make a motion to do that.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, so I would like for this to be just the trustees.
Okay, can I do the mayor first?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Trustee Lickit?
Hi.
Trustee Stetzer?
Hi.
Trustee Lanbeer?
Hi.
Oh my god, trustee Keating?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Bye.
Motion passes. Okay, let me stop the recording. Oh.
Pause it.
Yep, I will pause it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just texting Lily. Didn't mean to be on my phone.
Okay, so I think I have to make a motion to reopen the meeting, don't I?
Yeah.
Make a motion to uh reenter the public meeting.
One second.
Okay, trustee Stetzer?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Lickit?
Hi.
And Mayor Plummer, I. Okay, I'm just gonna let Dorothy know we're back.
I think we can just adjourn the meeting.
I think so too.
Do we have any other business?
Not here, no.
We're, we're good.
Mayor Plummer, you'll let us know how quickly March Burns's office needs us to.
Yeah.
Schrader, Schroder, I can't remember.
I know, yeah, whoever is, yeah, yeah, I'm going to follow up on that immediately because I really want to pounce, you know. Okay, if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Okay, trustee Stetzer?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Lickit?
Hi.
Plummer, I. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, you guys take care.